I called to the word of the meeting of Hampton School Board Wednesday, February 1, 2015. Tonight, we have with us Superintendent Dr. Linda Shiffler, our school attorney Nancy Reeves, Director of the Board Carolyn Bowers. This time, as far as please call the board.
Mr. Harper?
Here.
Ms. Henry?
Here.
Mr. Kilgore?
Here.
Mr. Pearson?
Here.
Mr. Samuels?
Present.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Ms. Smith.
At this time, we'll have our school board liaison Malcolm Richardson introduce our speaker for tonight's innovation in concern.
Well, tonight, bringing us our invocation, we have Kalen Thackeray, an eighth grader at Davis Middle School. She seems a very sweet girl. She's a competitive swimmer, and her mom says she's pretty good. And when she grows up, she wants to use psychology to identify criminals. Can we give a hand to Kalen Thackeray?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Success. Success is speaking words of praise and cheering other people's ways and doing just the best you can with every task and every plan. It's silence when your speech would hurt, politeness when your neighbors hurt. It's deafness when the scandal flows and sympathy with others' woes. It's loyalty when duty calls, it's courage when disaster falls. It's patience when the hours are long, it's found in laughter and in song. It's in the silent time of prayer, in happiness and in despair. In all of life and nothing less, we find a thing we call success.
Thank you. You want to introduce your family and demonstrate this on deck, please?
My mom, Amanda Thackeray, Ms. Whiteman, my principal, Mr. Randall, and Mr. Jones, my vice principals, and Ms. Pulli.
Thank you. At this time, this time, our public relations remarking detective will be coming forward with the recognition.
Not quite this tall. Good evening. This evening, it's our pleasure to recognize our National Board certified teachers. Created by teachers for teachers, National Board certification is the profession's mark of accomplished teaching. It is rigorous and performance-based, based on multiple measures, peer-reviewed, voluntary, and valid and reliable. Research shows that the students of Board certified teachers learn more than students in other classrooms. The following video, which was created by Hampton City Schools students, introduces our new National Board certified teachers. Roll the video, please.
It was definitely the time management. As a teacher, we have a lot of responsibilities that go beyond contract hours and then add in spending time with family. There were a lot of sacrifices made so I could complete the entries and study for the assessments. So a lot of late nights and weekends.
One of the most challenging parts for me was analyzing my lessons and trying to decide how I can improve my teaching practice. It's one thing to create lessons and implement the lessons, but it adds a whole nother dimension to teaching to actually go back and review and reflect and identify areas that I could improve and being honest with myself and trying to decide what I need to improve because there's definitely always areas to improve.
I think the most challenging part is probably twofold. Time management, just because you have the whole year to do it, but there's all the other requirements and day-to-day activities in the classroom that can catch up to you if you don't manage your time wisely. So I think having a schedule of when you were going to tape and when you were going to do each part definitely helped make sure that you stayed on track. The other part, I would say, is just making sure that you took the time to break apart the standards and really understand what they were asking for each section. I know sometimes, as I was reading through directions, it was easy to say, "Oh, I think that they mean this, so I'll just do that." And I had to really stop myself and say, "No, let me break this apart and figure out what exactly are they asking me to do so that I make sure that I include that in each section."
Probably the most, the most, the biggest challenge is finding the time. With a husband and three kids, and then your daily classroom activities and responsibilities, there was a lot of late nights, a lot of weekends that had to be sacrificed to be able to work on National Board certification. And the most disheartening part of that, all that work and time spent, was getting the scores and not making it or getting close and having to get the mindset of starting all over again or at least redoing those parts, which in itself is a big, big undertaking. So you have to dig deep and really pull out that determination and perseverance to be able to get it done.
Managing my time because it's very, very time-consuming, and I still had to make sure that I met those deadlines so that I didn't end up with a whole bunch of work at the very end. And I still had to make sure that I was doing everything in my classroom to make sure my students were still on track.
I would think that would be the reflection. As you're working on your entries and you study for the assessments, there's a lot of time spent looking at the best practices and education and applying it in your classroom. So I found myself constantly reflecting on what I'm doing and asking myself, "How does this benefit the students?"
One of the most valuable parts for me was being able to identify what a meaningful lesson is and being able to go back to my previous lessons, identifying how I can improve them, and implementing new lessons that are memorable and create a positive impact for the students.
The most valuable part of the National Board experience would have definitely been the reflection. As teachers, we do that every day anyways, but it's, it's different when you're taping yourself on a regular basis and you're required to sit down and look at a whole lesson on video, and then you can really see the things that, "Oh, I could have done this better," or "I should have done this differently," or "This worked really well, why don't I use that more often?" And like I said, even though, you know, teachers reflect often, I think it just gave me a different perspective, and it allowed me to look at it in a more complex way than I typically would in the day-to-day classroom.
Being able to really look at yourself in a very personalized way because you get to decide what lessons to teach and maybe stepping out of your comfort zone and learning a different way to think or a different way to do things was really the most valuable thing, to be able to get, to push yourself even further because as teachers, we're always learning and growing, and that's important. And this just pushes you in a whole nother way.
The reflection piece because for every entry, you have to reflect on the specific standards. So the most valuable part was kind of reflecting on my own lessons and my own assessments and just, you know, deciding whether or not I needed to change some stuff.
I would tell them to definitely do it. It was very beneficial for me. It made me rethink a lot of the things I was doing in the classroom, and it also confirmed a lot of the practices that I do. Sometimes it is a time management issue, but it really is self-paced, so I would definitely recommend it.
I would say it's definitely a worthwhile process. Hampton City Schools is very supportive in the process, and if I had to do it all over again, I would definitely do it.
I would say go for it. I know that it seems like a lot of work, and it is, but at the end of the day, I think as a teacher, I know, and as an educator, it really helped me probably change some of the things, you know, that I was doing in the day-to-day classroom, especially with that reflective piece. So I would say go for it. It's not, it's not as scary as it seems, and, you know, it's worth it. In a long word, it's worth it.
I would say go for it. Make sure that you are well-prepared and you understand the responsibilities and the time and the effort that it's going to take, but it's a great experience to be able to look at yourself and really focus on what you do well and then maybe things that you could really work on and do differently is a really great experience to be able to do. The financial gain is also not a bad thing, too, when you're looking at it, and we're very lucky to have a school division that values this experience and will pay for you to do the whole experience, which a lot of school divisions don't. So that was one of the great benefits and valuable things that I've learned.
To be sure to attend all of the workshops that Hampton City Schools holds throughout the year to support candidates and to make sure to get help from your mentor and anyone who offers to read for you, to take them up on it and take all the help that you can
As I said, that was created by our students at Sproutly Gifted Center, and they will be recognized in a minute. If we can call up Mr. Pearson and Katie Barbosa, who's our coordinator of climate and culture, to recognize our teachers.
I would like to start with recognizing our filmmakers, so Lisa Ann Wilson and Allison, if you guys could come on up. And Hope is Home Sick, is that right? I had emailed Mrs. Wilson, and I said, you know, "I've got this idea for recognizing our National Board candidates." Many of you guys know that Joan Davis used to do the whole recognition, and she had an incredible memory, and she could remember everybody's stories, and that's just not possible for me. And so I really wanted to do something different, and I thought, "What a better idea than getting some of our students to use what they're learning in class to help showcase our wonderful teachers." And so we have Allison, and this is just a little gift to say thank you, and you'll take one to Hope.
All right, we're going to recognize our new candidates first. Before we do that, will all the friends and family and colleagues who supported these candidates please stand and be recognized? As you guys heard the candidates talk about, it was a lot of late nights and weekends, and they definitely sacrificed time with their family and their friends in order to grow professionally. And so without your support, it certainly wouldn't have been possible. So thank you guys very much. Starting with our new candidates. First, we have Amanda Ross. And one more round of applause for them, please. All right, now we'll do our renewal candidates. When you earn National Board certification, it's good for 10 years, and then you do have to go through, it's a little shorter of a process, but still quite a process in itself. And so this year, we have three renewal candidates who took the time to go through that reflective process again. So first, we have Deborah Tominek. Is she with us tonight? And we have Marie Putzky. And that's it. Thank you guys so much, and congratulations.
I think we may be a smaller number this year, but I still think we rank very high in the state as far as the total number of National Board certified teachers that we have for the school division, so we really applaud them. And on behalf of the school board, we thank you for your diligence in achieving this distinct honor. It does separate you from other teachers, and we want you to continue to provide that quality instruction for our students because, in the end, that's what it's all about. Thank you.
It is now my pleasure to ask Pam Croom, President of the Hampton PTA Council, to come forward for a proclamation.
This is Pam Croom, President of the Hampton Council PTAs, and we have a, as she has reminded me, a very lengthy proclamation. "PTA Take Your Family to School Week, February 16 through 20th, 2015. Whereas Hampton Council PTA cultivates meaningful partnerships among parents, students, Hampton City Schools, and the community; whereas Hampton Council PTA serves as a primary resource for parent advocacy and involvement within Hampton City Schools; and whereas Hampton Council PTA encourages schools across the city of Hampton to invite families to their children's school to build stronger partnerships among families, schools, and community; and whereas parent involvement is a key component on a child's academic success; and whereas family-school connections are fostered by focusing on issues that are important to both schools and families; and whereas PTA's national standards for family-school partnerships were developed to reflect the most recent research about how parents, schools, and communities can work together to support student success; and whereas research shows that students with engaged parents are more likely to earn higher grades and pass their classes, attend school regularly, have better social skills, stay enrolled in school, and go on to post-secondary education; and whereas Hampton Council PTA is keenly aware of the importance of the family-school partnership in children reaching their full potential; and whereas expanded and enhanced family engagement in schools helps parents build positive relationships with school staff, connect with other families in the school environment, and feel like welcome members of a friendly school community. Now therefore, I, on behalf of the school board, of the city of Hampton, Virginia, do hereby proclaim the week of February 16 through 20th, 2015, as PTA Take Your Family to School Week. And the city of Hampton, and urge all citizens to foster the growth and success of their children in their lives, success of the children in their lives, by actively participating in their school environment. And this is signed by all the members of the school board. And so Pam Croom, I want to thank you for everything it says here, and also for anything else that you do. I've been knowing Pam for many years before she was president. It's always been right at the forefront in working with our parents and our children in schools, and also had the chance to work with another committee in the city of Hampton. So I see, I used to see you once a month on the third Wednesday. But continue the good work you're doing, and I know you're a tremendous leader for our community and our schools.
Well, thank you for the school board recognizing this week. Well, I do want to thank the school board for recognizing this week, and we do want to invite our community, our parents. It takes us all, being involved in our schools. There are many ways that citizens and parents can be involved in their schools. You don't have to join the PTA. You don't have to be on a committee, although we would love for you to do that. It is about being involved in our school community and making sure that our children understand that we are there for them and that we have a vested interest in their success in our schools. So once again, I thank the school board for proclaiming the week, and we look forward to having each and every one of you out at our schools, not only this week, but all year long.
The third week in February is Recognizing the Commonwealth as School Board Clerk Appreciation Week. Our school board clerk is Mrs. Carolyn Bowers, and she is in her 18th year as school board clerk. We appreciate her service to the school board and community, and now the board will read a proclamation and honor her.
I'm going to read the formal proclamation first, and then I'm going to make a personal proclamation. This is a wonderful proclamation, signed by Martha Mugler, school board chair, and I guess summarizing statement would be, "The Hampton School Board joins the VSBA in recognizing the many and varied contributions of school board clerks. Now therefore be it resolved that at its meeting on the fourth day of February, the Hampton School Board also recognizes the third week of February as School Board Clerk Appreciation Week." We want to thank Ms. Bowers for her tremendous work effort as far as our clerk is concerned, and my personal proclamation is, I won't tell the audience how long I've known her, but I've known her for a very long time, all the years she's been in Hampton City Schools. And even though we meet twice a month, she can tell you, we either see her or call her almost every day of the week, and we really appreciate how she plans all of our meetings, locally, Charlottesville, Richmond, Nashville, Tennessee. She does all the arrangements for us. We've never had a problem. Thank you so much. Now, in addition to that, Mr. Joe Kilgore has another presentation to make.
On behalf of the school board, thank you very much. We have to go to great lengths to hide things from Carolyn, so.
Thank you.
And in closing, February is also School Board Appreciation Month in Virginia. Several of our schools have put together gifts of appreciation for our, for our board members, but first, we had a couple of schools who made a couple of videos, so we're going to show those first. So let's roll those videos.
Education is learning what you didn't even know you didn't know, by Daniel Borstin.
The whole purpose of education is to turn mirrors into windows, by Sidney J. Harrison.
Education is the most powerful weapon which you can use to change the world, Nelson Mandela.
The goal of education is the transfer of knowledge and the dissemination through John F. Kennedy.
Education is the key to the golden door, to the golden door of freedom, George Washington Garber.
February is School Board Appreciation Month. We would like to recognize Hampton City Schools' school board members and thank them for supporting our education. We would like to say, "Thank you, school board."
Just to make sure I give credit, the first one was Machen Elementary, and the second one was from Eaton Middle School. Now I need for a couple of my friends to come up here, little friends, Molly Coin, kindergarten, James Coin, third grade, and Kennedy Golsby, kindergarten. These are Armstrong students, and they have a presentation to make to the board. Did I miss one? Darcy Fletcher. I'm sorry, Darcy Fletcher. Come on up here, Darcy. So they're, they are going to make a presentation from Armstrong, and then we have some additional gifts for you as well.
I'm Sandy Diana, and I teach at Armstrong Elementary School, and Ms. Stovall asked if I would head up a project to recognize our wonderful school board. And so I took an idea that I had learned when I was in the seventh grade with Mr. Lockhart as my art teacher at Bratley Junior High School, so I just told everybody that I'm a little older than middle school. Anyway, so we did a dot representation of your school board picture. You don't get to see it yet. They get to unveil it for you. It is a dot, we have dots everywhere. They're in the hallway. There's one on the floor over there, by the way. There's, they're everywhere. Anyway, these, these boys and girls, they have stayed after school. We've done this in, we've started on Thursday of last week, so we've done all of this in a week. But we thank them for being here. There were a few other children that were not able to be here. Clarence and Tequila Leatherberry and Eli Chotray, Chotra, was not, they were not able to be here tonight. And then our, my second grade class, of course, they just got right into it, and then the whole school has been punching dots. Everybody has been punching dots, literally. Anyway, so are you ready to unveil the picture? Who do you want to show it to first? Them or them? Sorry. Okay. Okay. All right.
Hello.
Oh, my goodness.
Great, great.
Thank you.
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 Do they look like the picture? That's the question.
That's amazing.
I did pay attention at one point in time in class. It was art class. Would you all like to help me pass these out? We're going to give. I'll go down there with you. You give what to him? Mr. Samuels? You give this to Ms. Smith. She's right there.
Yes, you got your beer. If you had glasses, you didn't get glasses.
Awesome.
It's wonderful.
Oh, I'm tweeting.
They're so cute.
I like it better than the regular one.
Why don't we leave it at Ms. Mugler's place?
He's a strong young man.
That's all we have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And we'd like to thank the staffs, school staffs and students from Machen, Eaton and Armstrong for this wonderful recognition. If we ever wanted to close a school board meeting on a good note, this would be it. But unfortunately, we have to continue. But thank you so much. Thank you. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
It's been moved by Mr. Kilgore to accept the consent agenda. And seconded by Ms. Henry. To do so, please call for the vote, Ms. Bowers.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Harper?
Aye.
Mr. Pearson?
Aye, motion approved. This time, I'm going to recognize our superintendent, Dr. Linda Shiplett, who will come forth with the staff, superintendent and staff reports. Dr. Shiplett.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. Our first report this evening is an update on our energy management program, Synergistics. And, let's see. Mr. Malilla, I'll turn it over to you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Phil, and this is John, and we are the energy specialists for the school division. We're here tonight to give you an update on the energy management program through the first 21 months or so. And so without further ado, the good news first. Or maybe none. You got it, John. Right now? Okay. Got the finger on the button? Just go ahead. Our cost avoidance totals this far, through the past about 21 months or so, have now totaled over $1 million, which is about a 16% reduction in consumption of our utilities district-wide. The utilities and how they break down for the division, you can see that electricity is our major component. Almost 82% of the money we spend goes to Dominion. Natural gas, sewer and water also factor into that. We try to focus our efforts mostly on our largest consumer, which in this case is electrical consumption. Total utility costs is at the bottom, and our goal is to hopefully bring that down. When we talk about the savings for the energy management program, we use a term called cost avoidance. And what that is, is a correlation regression analysis that allows us to quantify the savings from the program. It takes into account past information, what we've used historically, things like weather, occupancy, billing period, and even things like utility rates. We want to make sure that when we calculate savings that we compare apples to apples. Weather is the number one thing that will cause those costs to go up and down, and it's something that we don't have any control over. So we want to make sure that we are showing the savings as representation of the program and not what happens outside. The breakdown for individual cost avoidance for each one of those utilities from April to December, you can see electricity again is our largest savings with over $800,000. Natural gas, over 74. Water and sewer, up to 90, for a total of $992,000 in cost avoidance just for the utilities. The other savings relates to money we've gotten back from utility providers for things like billing errors or for malfunctioning equipment. We've been able actually to go out and capture some savings from what we originally paid based on, you know, what we find in the buildings. This is a cumulative cost avoidance trend that shows month to month how we've been able to show over the past 21 months that each month we've saved a little bit more and a little bit more and a little bit more. As we continue on this job and learn new things every day, we can come up with new ways and new plans to help bring those numbers up. And you can see we're headed in the right direction, certainly. These bar graphs are showing specifically electricity. Our average unit cost hasn't increased. So what we're seeing here is the rates have stayed about the same over the past 21 months or so. Total use avoided is over 8 million kilowatt hours for a total avoided cost of over $827,000. The usage and the cost, that number at the bottom in the far-left bar says BATCC. That's our baseline use adjusted to current conditions. And this is where the cost avoidance part comes in. So we've got over five years of utility bills for the division that we have entered into this program. And it takes into account what we've used in the past and then applies what we've done to the division and what happens outside of our buildings and things that are outside of our control to help calculate what we would have used if we had stayed on that same path. The middle bar relates to what our actual entries for the utility bills were, and then the avoidance is our saving. This one shows specifically just kilowatt hours. If you look just at the electric bills and you were to tally the amount of kilowatts that we use in the division, the blue line represents 2012, which is our baseline year, where we started off at. The red one is 2013, which was last year. And then the green line shows where we are up to this point in 2014. So the important thing to notice here is that each year, so far, we've been able to reduce the amount of consumption that the division has, month after month after month. A total reduction of over 15%. The energy management program isn't just about dollars and cents. It also has an environmental impact as well. By reducing that 8 million kilowatt hours of electricity, it equates to reducing over 4,000 metric tons of carbon dioxide from the atmosphere or removing over 800 automobiles from the roads for an entire year or planting over 100,000 trees and letting them grow for 10 years. The program relies on the help of everybody in the division, from the top, the whole way down. We'd like to thank the school board for helping us implement the program, Dr. Shiplett, Ms. Scott and Tom Sawyer for giving us leadership and support, the community for helping to support the program, teachers, principals and staff in the schools for helping reduce their consumption in their classrooms and helping us coordinate efforts to more efficiently plan the way we run the school buildings, our maintenance staff for helping us identify issues in the division that relate to the energy management program that we can improve upon, and our new custodial and HVAC contractors that have, you know, kind of come right in with us and worked with us as far as enforcing and helping the guidelines for the energy management program. The future of the program, we want to continue to ensure that the division continues efficient operations of our facilities, to continue to monitor and facilitate initiatives throughout the division, to explore opportunities to save more money through different energy reduction programs, and really hope to develop a culture of energy conservation. And I think that goes back to, this was a headline from the Daily Press from October, "Recent EPA Guidelines on Emissions Standards For Particularly Power Plants and Dominion Can Lead to an Increase in Our Rates." Eventually, we're going to get to the point where we use less energy and it costs us more money to operate our facilities. When we speak with teachers, you know, every kilowatt hour counts, every computer, every Promethium board, anything that we can turn off or set back when somebody isn't using it makes a difference. For last fiscal year, we used over 27 million kilowatt hours at about 0.09 per kilowatt hour. If that rate increases half a cent, our utility bill will go up over $144,000 without increasing consumption. So I think it's important to make sure that we are being as efficient as we can with the way we run our division and really just bring some of the same things that people do at home into the workplace. Questions?
Thank you for your presentation. Any questions on the board? Ms. Henry?
I know that a lot of things we've done with grant investment and capital improvements with, for example, more efficient lighting in all the buildings has been a factor. Do you have any information? Are you starting to calculate? For example, I'm standing behind a big banner from Phillips Elementary School, which got all-new, much more efficient windows. And I know that's the plan to continue with a number of elementary schools with that design, to replace those old, single-pane windows with a very high R-rated window. Are we keeping track of how much that's going to save us in energy costs?
Yeah, the great thing about the energy management, the software that we use, is that we're able to track that month to month to month and then historically look at what it was in the past and what those windows have done for the building, along with data we've gathered through energy audits. We've also invested some money in upgrading the control system for that building. So after we, you know, get a year or so's worth of data with those things, we'll be able to put a better number on what the return in investment on, say, increasing or upgrading the windows or the control system on our buildings.
I know, I know. Everybody thinks that one of the things we're doing is turning off the lights. And that's nice, and it's important, and you all are on that all the time. But it's also important that our strategic capital investments have been for much more efficient boilers and much more efficient control systems. And that has a lot to do with the consumption, does it not?
Yeah, it definitely does. Whenever, anytime we replace equipment, you know, we're always looking for the SEER values and how efficient they run. Are they compatible with the control system we have? And really, we try to design that equipment for what the use of the space is. It's better to scale it to what we use the buildings for than to overkill it or to, you know, use something that we don't necessarily need or would cost us a lot of money to run based on how we normally operate buildings.
Thank you.
Another question?
Yeah, just have one question. This report was very thorough, and thank you so much for, you know, making this report. But one thing, what is your day-to-day activities like?
Depends on the day.
Okay.
You know, the energy management position itself at the beginning was a lot of introducing the staff to sort of what the guidelines are and kind of how we want to work with them to develop an idea of how they use their buildings and to come up with proactive ways to kind of reduce their consumption. As we've gone through the past 20 or so months, we've had a lot of changes. And now it's kind of somewhere in between that piece and then being a little more hands-on with the contractors and the actual operation of the equipment in the control system and trying to figure out, you know, can we tune the smallest part to get a return in the end without anybody in the classroom knowing that we've done anything? And it's, you know, even a couple of degrees here and there on the temperature of our boiler loops, you wouldn't notice it in the classroom, but when the natural gas bill comes at the end of the month, it makes a big difference because we're able to run them less and consume less. And so it's kind of started off as, you know, being out on the ground and talking with the teachers and auditing a lot of the buildings. And now it's really gotten into a lot more of the administration part and actually how the systems run and what we can do to improve them and what we can do to keep the buildings in good shape.
Keep up the good work. Thank you.
We're trying.
Mr. Harper?
You mentioned, I think you mentioned, I might have missed it, a savings of 8 million kilowatt hours?
Yes.
And that equates to how many dollars?
About 827, or so, 827,000. It's about 0.09. 949, I think, is what the number comes out to.
Per year?
Per kilowatt hour. It's about 0.09 per kilowatt hour, over 8 million kilowatt hours, whatever that number.
That equals that amount of money spread over how much time?
21 months. So we're just, when we start, when we do our spring break audits, it'll be two years to the day when we started auditing buildings and implementing the program.
You have a question?
Thank you, Mr. Malilla and Mr. Coverley. We certainly appreciate your efforts on behalf of Hampton City Schools.
Thank you.
Our next report is an update on the BASE program. You may recall, we started the BASE program last year at Bassett, and we're fortunate enough to be able to expand it this year to both Andrews and Aberdeen. And so tonight, Dr. Cooper will be introducing an update on that program.
Good evening. I'd like to recognize Sonia McKeithen, who is the leader of the department where this work occurs. But she is going to turn over the presentation to Mia Moore, our school court liaison, who does the work with the school principals and staff in the buildings. Mia?
All right. Good evening. My name is Mia Moore. I'm the school court liaison. I work for the Department of Student Services. I'm here to provide a brief update about the BASE Family Support Initiative. But I think before we talk about BASE, we kind of need to talk about the background and where it came from. Next slide, please. So BASE is a product of the HERE initiative, which developed in 2010 and was launched by more than 10 agencies in the community. And it is a comprehensive truancy intervention designed to support students and families at the very first sign of truancy. So interventions typically take place at the first, the very first unexcused absence. And I think that the HERE initiative is a great example of our mission in action. The HERE initiative, once again, it is a strength-based, family-driven approach to address the underlying issues that are contributing to truancy. And how does truancy affect the student's performance? Well, we took the mean or average of truant students versus non-truant students. And we found that truant students scored 17.6 points lower on math SOLs compared to non-truant students or students that attended school on a regular basis. And truant students also scored 23.1 points lower on reading SOLs. So we know that truancy does have an effect or an impact on performance. But why are their kids not coming to school? Well, there are some common barriers that we've discovered. Obviously, some families have been experiencing financial issues. There's some family matters going on. They're homeless, insufficient parent support. Sometimes, parents have to work overnight. So when they come home, they're tired, and now they have to get up and get their kids ready for school. And sometimes it's a little stressful, and they don't have sufficient support to support their family and get everything together. There's some personal issues that the child may be experiencing, such as low self-esteem or feelings of rejection and failure. And one of the overall major themes that we've encountered when working with truant students is that there is a health concern, whether it's mental or physical health that's not being addressed. A lot of kids are suffering with childhood depression or other mental health disorders. Or it could be poor nutrition or dental or other vision issues. But as far as the HERE initiative is concerned in the BASE program, our overall goal is to help families overcome these barriers, to assist the families with re-engaging or reconnecting with the school system, and to also assist the families with connecting with other systems of care in the community. And as we know, when the children aren't coming to school, And as we know, when the children aren't coming to school, then they're at risk of engaging in other activities that may be dangerous or can have long-lasting impacts on their futures, such as dropping out of school, educational failure, perhaps substance abuse use, teen pregnancy, social isolation, and there's a potential that they'll engage in delinquent activity. So now, how is the HERE initiative, how does it work in the school system? Well, we have a number of interventions in place that are in place to help reduce truancy and support families. When students don't come to school at the first and second unexcused absence, that's when we're making those phone calls. Between the third and fourth, we're starting the plan. We're having sit team meetings or making referrals to YPEP, which is the Community Services Board, referring them perhaps to the therapeutic day treatment. At the fifth unexcused absence, that's when we have the administrator get involved and they schedule an appointment with the parent and the child and they have what we call a corrective action plan or a CAP meeting. And that's when we're really looking into what are some of the barriers? What's going on at homeschooling in the community that's preventing this child from coming to school? And how can we really help this family? Then we're making recommendations and referrals out into the community to try to connect them to other systems of care. Unfortunately, if that is unsuccessful, then the next step is to refer them to the truancy response team, which is a multidisciplinary team we have at the Department of Human Services. We have a representative from the school there, Mrs. Shawne McGyver, she's our attendance coordinator. We have a representative from the Department of Human Services, Mrs. Anita Williams, and we also have two CSP workers from the Community Services Board, they're case managers, Marjorie Dodson and Mr. Darrell Hales. And basically, it's a multidisciplinary team. They talk about what's going on, what are the barriers again, what didn't work with the corrective action plan, how can we get these recommendations or goals into action? What can we do to help? And what we found is that with the TRT, having all those team members there, we were immediately able to make those connections to systems of care. So how can we do this in the school? What do we need to change? And that's when we decided we're going to do the BASE program, which initially stood for Bassett's Approach to Success and Empowerment. It's the pilot program of BASE. It started last year. We were able to work with Ms. Betsy Clark. She got Jennifer Seals in for us. Well, actually, Judge Duggar, the chief judge for the Hampton Juvenile Domestic Relations District Court, he's a great advocate and champion for Hampton City Schools, and he talked to the city manager and Hampton Court Services and the Hampton Department of Human Services and other agencies and was able to obtain funding for this additional service to the schools at no cost to us. So we were extremely thankful. We got the worker in and we found that she was able to connect these families to other systems of care, she was able to make home visits and basically make those connections that we needed. So with that being said, being that that program was so successful, we decided to extend it to two other schools. When we'd extended that, the program this year to Andrews and Aberdeen, the name changed from Bassett's Approach to Success and Empowerment to a Balanced Approach to Success and Empowerment. So like I said, we're at Andrews and Aberdeen this year, and how we chose the schools was we looked at the schools that had the highest level of need, which schools had the highest free lunch and reduced lunch program. And I believe Aberdeen was second in the district at the time. So we looked at Aberdeen and Andrews. The principals were definitely on board. Over the summer, we had an in-service with the teachers and administrators to get them prepared before we actually put the workers in the school. We talked about what the family support specialist role would be once she was in the school and what their role was in the process. And Bassett was already, they already had Ms. Jennifer Seals from last year, so she started in September when the school year commenced. But the BASE program workers at Andrews and Aberdeen, they had to go through some extensive training and then they were put in place by November. Some of the resources or some of the benefits of having the BASE worker there is, like I said before, was having that family support specialist there, we're able to make that immediate connection to community resources. So they're making referrals to the family assessment and planning team at the Department of Human Services, which is a multidisciplinary team that has funding for different services in the community that perhaps families' insurance or Medicaid would not pay for. Case management services, which is, case management is a service that links families to other community services that they may not have access to, whether it's referring them to outpatient counseling or to a psychological, have a psychological evaluation, or further strengthening their bond with the school system. Therapeutic mentoring and recreational activities to improve children's social skills. Parent support to help parents budget and come up with feasible plans with getting their, for getting their children prepared and morning for school and things like that. And also financial assistance, helping them pay their rent and utilities, providing them with clothing and assistance, linking them to Medicaid. Some kids, unfortunately, their Medicaid may have lapsed, so they're not insured at all. So they're able to make that immediate connection and also making those referrals for a psychological and psychiatric evaluation. So next, I have Ms. Young here from Aberdeen Elementary, and I think she'd like to talk about how the BASE worker and how the BASE program has positively impacted her school environment.
I just want to say that collaboratively, the new BASE worker, the program, and the staff have really made the program successful. If you look at some of the pictures there, that's from our first collaborative event entitled "Nothing But Attendance With an MBA Theme." We also partnered with Hampton High School, who sent out their junior varsity basketball team to run math and science-based centers using basketball as the theme for the event. And we've seen more parents between November and January who we had a lot of difficulty getting into the building due to the efforts of our BASE worker and the coordination of our home-based attendance team. We meet regularly every Monday to review our students who've been truant, whose grades have been impacted, other issues that have been impacted in school because they're not there, and we brainstorm what we need to put in place to get those students and parents actively engaged in the everyday academic, social well-being of their child. And it's just been a wonderful partnership, especially with our BASE worker that we have, Ms. Knight. She's phenomenal.
And also, I believe we have a speaker from Andrews. And coming forward is Ms. Danielle Brooks. She is actually one of the BASE workers at Andrews. Because of the high student population at Andrews, they actually have two BASE workers assigned.
Yes, and Danielle Brooks and Ms. Tammy Hill are, were both the BASE coordinators at Andrews. And we were asked to just provide an example of how the BASE program was beneficial at Andrews School. And the best example we had was, imagine being a single mother with three children, all of whom attend Andrews School. Your home has just been destroyed by fire and you have very limited resources and minimal support systems. You run into your school's vice principal at the Walmart and she can see the anguish and the despair on your face, and she asks, "What's wrong? What, how can I do, what can I do to help you?" You explain your situation to her, you explain that you've been given a three-day voucher to stay at an area hotel in this time of tragedy, and you just don't know what you're going to do next. You don't know where you're going to go. The support systems that you have have been helpful, but they've only given you assistance if you can separate your family, and you don't want to do that right now. So she tells you, "Come into the school. We have the people there who can help you." You get to school that Monday, she's already emailed the family engagement specialist and the BASE coordinators. Phone calls to community representatives and community partners have already been made. And when you leave on Monday afternoon, you have shelter, you have clothing, you have resources and referrals, you have everything that you need that you couldn't access because your daily basic needs were your focus at the time. That's the impact, that's just one of the stories of the impact of BASE at Andrews School. And we hope to do so much more with this program. Thank you.
So with the implementation of the BASE program, we've definitely seen a reduction in truancyation in cases and an increase in truancy interventions. And I just want to leave saying that it truly takes a village to raise a child, and that's what we're trying to do here. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions on the board? Ms. Smith?
I just love this program. Thank you so much for sharing with us. And one thing I wanted to ask was, number-wise, I know it's too soon to say that, you know, Aberdeen and Andrews already gotten rid of truancy, but is Bassett keeping their numbers down? Is the program maintaining?
Absolutely, absolutely. And we've, we've noticed a reduction in all the schools as far as truancy is concerned. So yes, it's definitely making an impact.
Wonderful. And so will there be more schools on the horizon for it to spread to?
I'll answer that. I certainly hope, I certainly hope that our success will help us to continue to access the resources. This has all come about because of the tremendous support that we've had among our community agencies and the tireless work of Judge Jay Duggar. He really has been the one who's had the power to pull us all together and to really break down the silos. I do want to recognize the fact that Dr. Johnson from Bassett and Jennifer Seal are out here in the audience. And Mia, are you going to be introducing the other workers so that board members can have an opportunity to see them?
Sure. We have Ms. Erica Knight, she's the BASE worker at Aberdeen Elementary. Jennifer Seal, she's here from Bassett. And we also have Ms. Tammy Hill and Danielle Brooks and their supervisor, Ms. Betsy Clark.
Any other questions?
That was it. Just thank you so much for all you're doing.
I want to thank Dr. Cooper for having Ms. Moore make the presentation. We know that her job causes her to be out of the building quite often. So now we pass by her office and we see the name Mia Moore, we could connect it with a person. And all of you are doing a tremendous job. Hearing the example from Andrews, that alone tells us that this is one of the most comprehensive programs we've ever had. And you that are working in the field know that when parents have these problems in their life, I mean, it's really difficult. Sometimes they don't have transportation. So it's very difficult to go to health services, social services, wherever to get help. It would take two weeks probably to do what you can do in one day. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Pearson, I have to say, that's also what really sets Hampton apart from other communities, is that we've really figured out how to make sure that we access services and we don't create the barriers for our families. And I think that's evident tonight by seeing the number of people that are here from the other agencies. And thank you, Ms. Moore. Our last report this evening is our monthly business operations and financial update by Susie Scott.
Good evening. I just want to say, I really hate following those two presentations because I can't come close to topping either one of those. All right, I am here as usual to report on the status of our financial condition as of December 31, 2014. Our revenues to date at that point were $88,726,58. And our expenditures and encumbrances were $91,410,172. As we have been reporting, our fall membership was a total of 20,085 students. We use a trend over the past three years to determine how that will translate into March ADM. And based on that, we're projecting 19,884 students for our March average daily membership, which is 116 fewer than budgeted. So based on that and based on changes with the governor's caboose bill, which were actually quite minor, we expect a loss of revenue of about $612,000, which will absorb through attrition. The spending is a little bit higher at this point than it was at the same point last year, but that is because, as we've said in the last couple of meetings, we are capturing expenditures and encumbrances. And based on the fact that we're doing things differently through procurement, we have a lot of annual needs encumbrances that are already out there and reflected because the commitment is there, but the actual dollars get spent as the encumbrance gets liquidated. So it'll catch up as time goes on and look more like this next year. Any questions?
Any questions from the board? Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll have the hearing of any delegations or presentations of any written communications or petitions. And before the speakers come forward, I'd like to ask for Ms. Bowers to read the protocol.
Citizens are invited to address the school board on matters of public concern about the school division. Speaker forms are available prior to the start of the meeting. If you wish to address the school board, please complete the form and give it to the clerk. Each individual will have five minutes to speak. All comments shall be directed to the school board. Speakers may not yield their time to another. Speakers should address the school board with decorum on policy issues and refrain from personal attacks. Speakers shall not address matters involving individual employees or students, as these topics may violate confidentiality and are not appropriate in a public forum. Presentation of resolutions, declarations, proclamations, manifestos, awards, or other similar documents not originated under the auspices of the school board or administration is prohibited during the public comment period. The audience is asked to be respectful of all speakers. Public comment is the school board's opportunity to listen to the speaker. Since our purpose is to hear from you, the board will not engage in dialogue with the audience or whomever is at the podium. Matters requiring a response will be directed to the superintendent for research and response. The superintendent may report back on such matters at a subsequent business meeting session as appropriate. The school board carefully considers your comments as we decide matters that are brought before us. We appreciate your attendance and your input.
Thank you. We'll have the following speakers come forward in this order. First, we'll hear from Ms. Gray, followed by Mr. Dietrich, then it says, Ms. Cooper? Thank you. And Ms. Cherry. Ms. Gray is first. Good evening.
I had a whole different plan about what I was going to speak with tonight and the subjects on what I was going to speak. I was once told to speak from my heart and you'd understand it better. I've been talking to you about our pay and how our, I mean, we're just falling. Transportation is just falling. We learned this week that, I don't know how it happened or when it happened, but the heart of transportation, Darren Wills, is not going to be with us anymore. That was our heart. He's our backbone. When you thought that there was a crisis going on with the bus drivers, you called Mr. Wills. He talked to us. We did what he asked. Who are you going to call next time there's a crisis? Mr. Wills had the followers. As I said, he's our heart. He could ask us to drive through a hurricane and that it would be okay because it would be brighter on the other side. And we'd do it because he'd tell us, "You're my professionals. You make me proud." He's not here. How did this happen? How did you let transportation's heart just slip through? When you get older, a lot older than what any of us are right now, but you reflect back and you say, "I wished that there was one thing that I had done to change something or to make a difference." Well, I'm telling you now, Darren Wills will never have to ask that question. He's made a difference in not only the department, he stood behind us, he stood beside us. He was the heart of transportation. I don't know what we're going to do. I don't know if he can fix this. Darren Wills, as I said, he's helped us out a lot. I would have never got up and spoke before y'all the first time, but he told me that you need to fight for what you think is right. This is wrong. This is wrong. The city of Hampton is his home. Where is he going? I mean, I know where he's going. He needs to be here at home. Without him, transportation has nothing. I have told you all along that we're falling. We had a little bit of hope. And that's being doused. Darren Wills has changed a lot of lives in transportation. And he will never, ever be forgotten. But I'm going to tell you, a lot of us has got roadmaps on how to find him. And if he ever needs us, he knows all he's got to do is pick up that phone. Because that was one person in transportation that we could trust, that we knew was beside us. He was there to help pick us up, to give us our pep talks. We don't have that anymore. I don't know what the answers are. I do want to tell Mr. Wills that he might be closing this chapter in his life. But I hope that he will come home. We're praying that he does. And I am asking you, if you could take your sign, 383, and put it on a shelf because we're praying he's going to need it again one day. Thank you.
Thank you for your concern, Ms. Craig. Mr. Dietrich?
Good evening, members of the school board administration. My name is David Dietrich, 139 Wilderness Road. Let's talk about responsibility. You've all taken an oath to support the Constitution of the United States and Virginia. In particular, that means protecting the schoolchildren of Hampton from all threats. Show us that you're concerned about their security and freedom. Take action now. Before I go on, I just wanted to say something about the beginning of this meeting that's been troubling me. When is the last time you had a prayer at a school board meeting, a real prayer? Invocation actually means something. I would like to speak a little bit more on that the next time I'm before you. I'd like to move on to the definition of oath. According to Webster's 1828 Dictionary, I use that dictionary. It's available online for free because that's the definitions that were used by our founding fathers. A solemn affirmation or declaration made with an appeal to God for the truth of what is affirmed, that the appeal to God implies that the person imprecates his vengeance and renounces his favor if the declaration is false. If the declaration is a promise, the person invokes the vengeance of God if he should fail to fulfill it. A false oath is called perjury. Moving on to the definition of perjury, the act or crime of willfully making a false oath when lawfully administered. I'd like to introduce you to two, three documents, Declaration of Independence, Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution of Virginia. I ask that all of you, including those in the audience, take a look at those documents again if you haven't already, since you've taken an oath to support them. According to the Declaration, "We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. That to secure these rights, governments are instituted among men. I hold you to be the government in the case of our school system." According to the United States Constitution, "In the preamble, we the people of the United States, in order to form a more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, provide for the common defense, promote the general welfare, and secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and our posterity, do ordain and establish this Constitution for the United States of America." According to the Virginia Constitution, "That government is or ought to be instituted for the common benefit, protection, and security of the people, nation, or community, of all the various modes and forms of government that is best, which is capable of producing the greatest degree of happiness and safety." Back to Webster's dictionary, "Safety means freedom from danger or hazard." "Security," according to Webster, "means protection, effectual defense from danger of any kind." So as a government, the exercise of authority is over the actions of men in communities, societies, or states, the administration of public affairs, according to established constitution, in this case, Virginia and the United States of America. As far as school security in the Commonwealth of Virginia, a Quinnipiac University poll found that Virginia voters, Old Dominion voters, favored putting an armed police officer at every school, 66% to 29%. Section 182308 of Virginia Code states, "A firearm can be carried on school property as part of the school's curriculum or activities. A firearm can be present as part of any program sponsored or facilitated by either the school or any organization authorized by the school to conduct its programs, either on or off the school premises. A firearm can be carried on school property by any law enforcement officer." Virginia Code applies to school resource officers, school security officers, school administrators, teachers, and anyone else approved by the school board and/or the superintendent. So I ask you for these considerations. State law gives local governments broad authority to secure public facilities. Armed resource officers aren't the only option. Other remedies should be explored. Enhanced capabilities are not necessarily costly. This is about honoring your oath, protecting our children, and respecting Hampton citizens. The bottom line is, what have you done to address your primary obligations to Hampton citizens? That is, to secure our children. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Dietrich. Ms. Cooper?
Good evening. My name is Joyceen Cooper. I reside at 9 Water View Point. And I'm here this evening to read a statement from Reverend Hailstock. "Good evening, members of the Hampton School Board. I am unable to attend tonight's meeting due to a prior engagement, but felt compelled to have this message delivered to you, Reverend Broly Hailstock. The selection of a superintendent of schools is one of the most important decisions for any community. We must cast a wide net in order to find someone with proven success and an appreciation for diverse school divisions such as we have in Hampton. Therefore, as president of the Peninsula's Pastors Council, I hope this school board would honor the importance of having active, meaningful, community participation in the selection of Hampton's new superintendent of schools. Investing in a school division is directly tied to an investment in our community. Therefore, active community involvement should be a longstanding objective of this school board. Yes, you've conducted a short survey and held a couple of citizen forums, but that is in no way speaks to active community involvement in the selection of Hampton's new superintendent. It does not put forth goodwill or transparency for seven board members to be the only ones to conduct final interviews, make the selection, and then announce to this community, 'This is your new superintendent.' We understand the need for confidentiality. However, the city of Hampton was very successful with that issue in the selection of our new police chief. Their community involvement process was successful and highly appreciated by this community. So once again, the Peninsula's Pastors Council asks that the key community leaders from across this city be involved somewhere along the selection process of our new superintendent, thereby creating an environment of true collaboration. Thank you, Dr. Reverend Broly Hailstock Jr.
Thank you, Ms. Cooper. Ms. Cherry?
Thank you and good evening. My name is Ann Cherry. I reside at 1402 Crispell Court in Hampton. As vice president of the Hampton Branch NAACP, I was asked to bring this board some information regarding the superintendent search. The first is from our chapter president, Galene Conorton, who wanted this board to be aware of the following. She says, "I sincerely hope that the Hampton City School Board will consider and mirror the same format the city of Hampton used to choose the Hampton Police Chief. A group of diverse citizens were chosen to conduct a portion of the police chief interview process. The citizens had to sign a confidentiality form, and the applicants' names were not included in the process. Other cities have used the same format. Citizens have a vested interest in the superintendent position. After all, he or she will be responsible for moving Hampton forward in public education. Also, please ensure that diversity is included in the application selection and that the candidate has experience as a previous superintendent. We need a leader with experience as a superintendent. Thank you, Galene Conorton, President, Hampton Branch, NAACP." At the same time, Delegate Mary Christian wanted to be here, former delegate Mary Christian, and because of the weather, she wasn't able to. So she asked me to relay this to the board. "Good evening, Ms. Mugler and members of the Hampton School Board. As a former educator and former member of the Virginia Legislature, I have always understood the importance of engaging our community on issues that affect us all. However, as a former member of the Hampton School Board, I know all too well the importance of community involvement. Selecting a new superintendent of schools is a serious one, one that affects us all. Therefore, I ask that you strongly consider having an engaged community group to work alongside the school board as you move toward identifying those candidates who possess the qualifications and skill sets that will benefit our school division and our community as a whole. Our parents deserve this, and our community deserves this. So please do not shut out those community members who want to be engaged in the process as we all know too well that an involved community is a strong community. Thank you for your time, Dr. C. Thank you."
Thank you, Ms. Cherry. At this time, we have two items for action on the agenda tonight. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Vice Chair, I move approval of Action Items 6.01 and 6.02.
Second?
It's been moved by Mr. Kilgore and second by Ms. Smith that we approve Item 6.01 and 6.02. 6.01 is Revision of School Board Policy, KKA, Service Animals in Public Schools. And 6.02 is Revision of School Board Policy, LC Charter Schools. Ms. Bowers, call for the vote.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Harper?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Pierce?
Aye.
We next have two items. Is that right, Ms. Reeves? You are handling the items of... What? I'm sorry. Deliberation. We have 7.01 Revision of School Board Policies, BBFA and GBACB, Conflict of Interest. And 7.02 Revision of School Board Policy, BDDF, Voting Method. This has already been discussed before the board. So at this time, I'm going to simply ask, are there any questions concerning these two items for deliberation? If there are no questions, then these two items will move towards the item, towards the action agenda for the next school board meeting. So this comes to a point where we are going to announce that, of course, our next school board meeting will be held at the Reuben Sargent Building, February 18 at 6:30 p.m. And in addition to that, do we have any information from any board members or superintendent?
I do have a couple of dates that I'd like to announce. Our Hampton Education Foundation is going to be going to the Blue Phantom Inn tomorrow for their meeting. My superintendent's advisory board, my young people that I meet with once a month, will be meeting on Monday, February 9. And I am beginning my second round of visits to all the school faculties and staff. And I want to make sure you have this on your calendar. Our next SEAC meeting is Thursday, February 12 at 11 a.m. in SAC in the First Ward Conference Room. And you do have, for your next school board field trip, Aberdeen, Friday, February 13 at 9 o'clock. And then finally, next Wednesday, February 18, the Youth Career Expo will be held from 8 to 3 p.m. at the Hampton Convention Center. That's an amazing experience for our young people, and I hope that you will have an opportunity to come out and visit.
Any other announcements?
That's it.
Information? Mr. Harper?
No, no, no.
Okay, Ms. Samuels? Or Ms. Smith? And Mr. Samuels?
Yeah.
All right. I just wanted to share that I traveled to the General Assembly in Richmond last week with Ms. Mugler. And it was a great... It was the Capitol Conference for VSBA where they gave us a full day of explaining the bills out there and whether we should support, oppose, how it impacts our schools here in Hampton. And then we had the next day that we were able to meet with a lot of our district delegates and sat down with them. And it was just a really great time. And we really had a chance to advocate for Hampton City Schools. And I got to say, the legislator... The folks that work with our district, they're just so supportive of Hampton City Schools. It was just wonderful to meet with them and have that support.
Thank you.
I just want to share with the board